Oh, then I'll don't count them. Misinformed, I am sorry.
You got an extra one of those, a blank one?
No, Chad does.
Did you guys all sign in? Great, thank you.
I'm she.
Six twenty-two, regular city council meeting in order. If we could please start with budget relations.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I have none.
All right, with that, then I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero. But that will open up to public comments. If there's anyone who'd like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And with that, we will go to the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
No, I just want to make a comment that I really like how the claims was separated. It was very helpful to read.
It's, it gives you more information so that you can kind of see. So if that's how you want it, I guess we'll yield to Nick. When I was doing the claims, there was a couple of them that were electronic, and when I printed out the summary, they didn't show up. So I decided, I called the auditor and they said, just go back and print two months' worth, send them through, because there's some on there that I'm not sure you saw, like center point entries, some of the electronic ones. So I thought, yeah, this, it's more information. I think it's good information for you to have.
Yeah, I, I actually really found this a lot more helpful because it kind of broke it down.
Gives you more information about what you're paying for. Yep.
Is there a reason or is there an explanation for all the refunds on the utility bills?
I don't know, you know, I, I don't know why that's happening. I mean, I, I don't know. You'd have to ask Janelle about that. In the past, I don't know, I think that the previous city clerk never did that, but I don't know if she's, I don't know why she's doing it that way. It's just a different way that she's processing things.
Yeah, and to Nikki's point, maybe it's always been happening, and it just wasn't as clear.
Correct.
With the way it was laid out.
But that's something you might want to ask her about.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, at least.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries five zero. That will take us to six eight one, approver approval of resolution six dash twenty-six dash twenty-two dash twenty, what, dash twenty-nine, approval of general fund capital outland debt levies.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city council held a budget meeting on August thirty-first, and at that time, we went through the general fund. We looked at it line by line. You looked at your expenditures, made your decisions on what you thought that was needed for the city to be able to operate, and then we also looked at revenues. So, uh, city council was in agreement for the proposed expenditures, knowing that line items can be reduced in December before the final levy is submitted. So, uh, staff is recommending approval of the resolution nine twenty-six dash twenty-two dash twenty-nine, proposed twenty-twenty-three general fund budget and debt levy. And the total revenues were two million, two sixty-seven, seven eighty-nine, and that was what your total expenditures were also. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the administrator. I'm gonna look for the approver approval of resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
Make that motion.
We have a second.
A second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero, which will move us to resolution nine twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two dash thirty.
So.
Twenty-three preliminary levy.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I always say, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Which is it, the expenditures or the levy? So I think you always have to figure out your expenditures first in order to know how much money you need to collect. So I always do the, the budget first and then the levy second, as a resolution when I've, I've done budgeting. So again, you held a meeting on August thirty-first for a budget meeting, and in that meeting, the council decided that the amount of funds needed to provide services to the city of mayor residence would be two million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. After accounting for revenues of fees, licenses, permits, LGA, other grants, fire contracts, and miscellaneous revenues, the amount of taxes needed to provide the operation of the city was a million, seven, one, five, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The general fund levy is collected to provide funding for basic services, and the proposed levy is the one million, seven, one, five, eight sixty-seven, is roughly an, is an increase of roughly nine point seven percent increase over the twenty-twenty-two final levy. Um, the, it, this is a tax rate of fifty-one point six eight percent, or an increase of three point two five, the tax, last year's tax rate at forty-eight point four-three. Now I had a, uh, council still, again, has the opportunity to cut the budget, to lower the levy, um, between now and December, as you think about some of the budgeting that we, that you did, or some of the funds that you had. Um, you have a new administrator coming, he can take a look at it, he may be able to find some ways for you to reduce the levy also. But I did have a call or an email from, um, the Herald Journal about, uh, why was the increase in the funding from the one seven, from the one-two to the one seven, and how much money that was, but he didn't quite understand that the pie's gotten larger to make the pieces different. I mean, there's so many things that go into the levy. It's not just, it's, it's, there's so many things to do. So, I would recommend approval of the resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two thirty, certification of the twenty-twenty-three preliminary tax levy in the amount of one million, seven, one, five, eight sixty-seven.
Questions for the administrator? So Luann, just to clarify, that number two, it is nine dash twenty-six, correct?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
All right. I see it on here, okay.
Is it on the resolution, right?
It's on the resolution, correct.
Okay, it's not on, okay, uh, that is, I'm sorry, I apologize.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash thirty, approval of the twenty-twenty-three preliminary levy.
Make that motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero. Six eight three, approval of truth and taxation hearing date.
As a part of the whole levy and, and budgeting process that cities and counties go through, local units of government, the city is required to hold a meeting to allow the public to discuss the budget and the final levy. The date must be between November twenty-fifth and December thirtieth, and be held after six P M. Past years, the city has held this meeting as part of the first regular meeting in December. So staff is recommending that the meeting be held on the first meeting in December, and that date is Monday, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two.
Any questions on that? Then I will look for a motion to approve the December twelve, twenty-twenty-two date for the truth and taxation here.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero. Uh, six eight four, approval, approval of E D A levy resolution.
So.
Dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is before you again to, um, you must pass the resolution, and then upon passing of the resolution, it must be published in the journal twice along with a legal publication. Legal will give the date and time of the public hearing that will be held to allow public input on that levy. The date for the public hearing will be Monday, October tenth at six thirty or shortly thereafter. Attached is the legal onus and the resolution for your consideration. Staff is recommending approval.
I'll look for a motion to approve the public hearing for the E D A levy on Monday, October tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero. Six eight five, approval of resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-two, contract for police services.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the city has received the proposed contract for police services for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. Here's some history on the reason for the increase and the explanation for the increase from the Carver County Sheriff's Office. I don't know if you want me to read all what they wrote, but that was in an email that he sent to me about the twenty-twenty-one contract rates mirrored twenty-twenty, and then because of COVID and some other things happening, there was an increase in the, um, in, in the cost to the city. You did budget a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-three contract. It is a hundred and thirty-eight sixty for the contract. Also, in the, the resolution that I have presented to you, I don't know if you want to leave the hours in the contract, in the, in the resolution, or if you want to leave that more open. Um, and then also, we talked with Hollywood Township, wanted to purchase some hours from the city on our police contract, and that's on page one, one point one of the contract, where it says we are allowed to do that. So, um, I guess I would like some input about if you want the hours in the resolution, and then a motion on the resolution approving the signature of the mayor and myself for the contract.
All right, any comments on, uh, let's start with the hours in the resolution. To me, as long as they're in the contract, I'm fine with that. It doesn't matter.
I agree. If we put them in the resolution, does that change our ability to sell them? No, it's just more.
The, the hours that are, that you guys are asking for people to be here are really not very conducive for people that have families. So in order to be able to allow the, to have someone that would bid to be a police officer here, to have different hours, you might, you're gonna get a different person.
Well, we had a long discussion about this a long time ago, and our current deputy was fine, and we felt that it was better coverage for our town and our needs. And that's kind of where I'm, I'm not looking to change them and go back to what we were at before, like the eight to four. I don't think we've had a problem with it. So I think leaving them in works for me.
I think we need hours in there, in the contract. Um, yeah, to Nikki's point, I think in the last four years, maybe, we've juggled hours around quite a bit, and we've fluctuated them. To me, I haven't seen a change, either way, good or bad, you know, positive or negative on those. I personally, I think we should reconsider the hours being as late as they are, um, only for the fact of it is, it is, they're not ideal hours right now. Work until ten o'clock at night. People don't want these shifts. If, uh, our current deputy doesn't take them, and no one else signs, someone's gonna get assigned to it, and they're not gonna be happy then because they're being forced into this or forced in hours.
Well, I feel we need to have them in before we make a decision. I, I guess this is the first I've heard that we were having problems with staffing for these hours.
Well, there, I mean, I think we've heard that all along from the sheriff himself, that they're not.
Oh, I, that was not, that was not what I recall from those conversations in the past, is that the current deputy at the time was okay with those hours and felt that they, they worked for his schedule, from what I recall, and that, um, unfortunately, ha, he had a medical leave, and for other shortages, we were given completely different hours. This is the first time, I think, now we're back to our normal hours in the last year and a half. Because we were, they were twelve-hour shifts, and they were based, and they were just given, we were given any deputy at any time, um, to, to cover those hours based because of their shortage of deputies.
I thought that was staffing on.
Yeah, that was staffing on Carver County. That wasn't necessarily our hours, but I think the hours prior to that seemed to work well. Um, I guess if you want to take them out, but I think that, I, I, I don't, I, I have not heard from them to say that they disliked it. I felt that.
And I'm not saying our current deputy dislikes somebody, I'm not putting those words, that's.
Conversation that I've had is that they're not very conducive hours, so you're not gonna get people to bid on it. They don't want to bid on it because they don't want to work due to tense. That's what I've heard. Because when you have a family, you, you, when you have a family, then you can't be home at supper time, you can't be home to put your kids in bed, you're, you're gone, you can't do any of the school activities.
And I totally understand that.
So that's the conversation I've heard.
I thought that it was better for the city because a lot of people are not here during the day.
Right.
And that we had, nobody was here in the evenings, and we talked about the summer hours were different than the winter hours. We've talked about that, where we were, they were more in the winter, people are out until ten o'clock at night, um, you know, things like that. I know that, I just know that we've had this conversation, we tried it. Unfortunately, because of COVID and staffing shortages, we have never really gotten a true read of what this new look that we had. Um, so.
Yeah, and I'm not, I, I, I'm not disputing, we've talked about it, I mean, it's for the hour, I just, like I said, after these four years of juggling hours to different ones, I haven't seen a huge decrease in anything or an increase. I, I don't, I think we're just as fine doing eight to four-thirty, eight in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon, myself, but, um, it certainly doesn't have to be that way. I mean, to Luann, what Luann said, I have talked to some deputy that had those hours. I agree with what she's saying about the hours. People don't want them, they're not ideal hours.
Someone's gonna be forced to probably come here.
Yeah.
That doesn't want to be here.
They won't be happy if that's the case. And I, and my gut tells me that's why we're getting a new town cop every two years. But.
I thought they just rotated them.
No, they bid on it. They actually bid on it, and if nobody bids, then someone gets placed.
So with that, I'll, I'll look for a motion, if someone wants to make a motion to keep the hours the same and accept the contract, or accept the contract, or with different hours proposed, I'll, I'll open it up to any motion someone wants to make.
Do we have to have hours in? So what happens if we don't?
They don't know what they're bidding on.
Then the sheriff, you'll, you'll talk to Mike Wollin, and he'll tell us what he thinks that it should be, and they'll, they'll bid on certain hours.
That takes it out of the councils.
Right, and then that, it fits for their staffing, whatever their staffing can, needs can be, or whoever can make the, make it work with the deputies that they have. It gives them more flexibility to, to fill a position. In the past, we never put hours in.
No, but that was the whole concern. So I'm just, I'm just really disappointed in this whole, this whole process that's been in this eight years that I've been in this seat. I'm just disappointed that, unfortunately, we didn't get a good read on what it was, and we had a big discussion about time, because we're a bedroom community, that the deputy came in at noon and worked till ten and worked fours, and then we had more coverage, and we had coverage on the weekend, because right now, we, before, we didn't have coverage on the weekend, and I understand that's not conducive to a family, um, and that's maybe why a deputy takes on that, but that was kind of where we're at. So I'm just, I'm just slightly disappointed that we didn't get a good read, and that we might just go back to the Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty, and it just gives us no coverage on the weekends or in the evenings, except for county cars when they are driving through. So that's just my.
Yeah, and we're gonna.
I'm not against having a deputy here, I'm just disappointed in how it's played out. Unfortunately, some of them were not foreseen by anybody.
Yeah, and with, uh, selling of the fire station, the little makeshift cop shop that we've kind of benefited from, having other people, other deputies come in and go, that goes away as well.
I would rather have a better, a different, another discussion with the sheriff's department. I would be okay removing the hours at this time, but I, I'd like to bring it back to have a discussion of hours and what works best.
So approve the contract without hours.
Or are we better to approve it with hours and be open to a conversation?
You'd always amend the contract.
Yeah, I mean.
To include hours. Because Hollywood Township is waiting for you too, to, and I, I didn't bring it to the council till now, because I waited for you to pass on the budget to know that that's what you were gonna spend on the, on the police contract.
Right. I mean, like I said, I'm not, I'm not against, I don't know, I'm, I'm mixed on it. I don't, I don't want it to fail just because there's these set hours. I, I'd like to bring it back as another discussion point with the sheriff's department.
So approve, approve without hours, without specific hours.
Correct.
Pending further conversation.
Yeah, that's, that's my motion.
That's a motion, approve the contract without hours pending a further discussion with the sheriff's department.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, uh, from Haley, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries five zero.
And then we, have we already approved contracting with the township, Luann?
No, they were waiting, we were waiting to get it into our contract with the sheriff's department. Now it's there, now we can have that discussion with them.
Numbers, and then we'll talk, and then they'll come back to us.
Yeah, and either, their attorney's gonna have to draw up a contract, remember? Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, they, I've been in contact with them, they did call me, and I did tell them it was on the agenda for tonight, so they know.
Six eight six, approval of financial resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-three, change to bank card signature cards.
Well, as y'all know, my days are letting, are winding down here, and there's gonna be a new sheriff in town. So the new sheriff in town has to have ability to be able to sign checks. So with the starting date of the new city administrator fast approaching, it is appropriate for the city council to authorize him as a signatory to the city's financial accounts and to remove the interim administrator. The following resolution adds Nicholas Johnson, city administrator, and removes interim city administrator on October third, which is a week from today. So I'm requesting approval of resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-three, authorizing change to the bank signature cards and financial institution.
Motion to approve resolution nine dash twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-three, authorizing change to bank signature cards.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Luann, for all your hard work.
You're welcome. I, I want to thank you for allowing me to be able to come back and be serviced to you as a city council and to the citizens of mayor. I've, I've really enjoyed it, and I, I really appreciate the trust that you put in me to come back. So thank you very much.
Can we vote?
No.
Well, let's vote on that then. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
I say ditto to what Chad said.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we.
Oh, and welcome, Nick.
Yeah.
He'll do great. He's gonna be, he's gonna be fantastic for the community.
Six eight seven, discussion on the Drew property.
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, I was asked to do several things, um, about the Drew property. One, I was asked to find out about detachment of the property. I was asked about putting a private well on the property. And so, um, we can detach the property from the city of mayor. Long story short is, if you do that, there's no building eligibility for the lot, because the building eligibility went with the house when they were part of the township. So they couldn't build, it becomes an unbuildable lot then. Um, and it's a long process to do that. So even if we detached it, they still couldn't build. At one time, the lot was part of a larger parcel of property which had the building eligibility. So I did contact Minnesota Department of Health, and they do not have opposition to a well being constructed on this property, as you can see by the email. It goes by city code. So city council will need to discuss the option of changing our ordinance to allow well within city limits. Um, they wouldn't have to, if they construct a septic tank instead of hooking into the forest main, they're going to meet all of, have to meet all of Carver County's septic tank requirements, because Carver County is who does inspections on septic tanks in the city of mayor. So the other option is just to let them hook into the current sewer line. So I provided you information on detachment, I provided you the information from the, um, on building eligibility's from the Carver County code, and then the email from the Minnesota Department of Health and the city of mayor's city code on private wells for domestic use in, in properties. Had a discussion with John Anderson about it, and John says that there are some communities that do allow wells in, in their city limits, but it has to be through ordinance. It planning, it wouldn't be a planning ordinance, it would be a city code ordinance. I didn't get the opportunity today, I apologize. I was gonna try to see if I could find another city that had the ordinance, the code ordinance, the language for what it would be, because ours says, if it's not within a thousand feet, then they can dig a well. Well, drilling of installation of new private wells for domestic use on any property to which city water utility service is available within a thousand feet is prohibited. So if they were more than a thousand feet, then they could dig a well, is what, but they are closer than a thousand feet, I'm sure. But you could add something where, um, if it's not, I don't, I don't know if you want to really use the word financially, because it's financially feasible to do it, it's just what's the cost. But if it's not physically, the environment or something isn't conducive to be able to run city water to the property, that they could be allowed to dig a well, but at one, at, soon as city water is available, then they have to hook into our city water system. I mean, you could do language like that if you wanted to in the ordinance, in an ordinance. And an ordinance wouldn't take long, you could have it at your next meeting, it'd be published, it'd be in effect ten days after publication, or it really goes into, it can go into effect right away, whether you publish them or not, you're supposed to publish them, and then they go into effect ten days. Sometimes cities don't publish them or forget to publish them, well, then they still become, they still become an ordinance, even though they don't get published. So I, I don't know what you want to do, if you want, um, further research on some ordinance language that allows for wells, I, I don't know.
That's, that's the route we take, I think we can find the language.
Yep.
It could be something as simple, if the city's unable to provide the water to that property, a well may be considered.
Yep.
You know, the council, I think we can do that.
Yep.
If that's the way we want to go.
My concern is this. I feel like we're always making exceptions for this property. That's why they were brought into the city. I'm really struggling with doing another exception when it's, it's just a Band-Aid to this bigger issue that we have with all the homes in that area. I'm not against it, I'm just struggling with trying to find these Band-Aid fixes that we don't know what can happen, and one of the issues is, is now the homeowner who we Band-Aided before and did a special annexation into the city, did a private line for sewer, they have a well, they have a well, you have a well?
Yes.
You know, that it's just, we're just fixing for, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, but for a single resident to try to like, figure out, and I, I understand we're a small city and we have the flexibility to do that, but I just really struggle with, we always are trying, you know, what, what's to say we do that now? We don't know what those ramifications are going to be. Like, let's say we annex them, the, the home, other homes in in five years, well, now they just put in money in a well and a sewer, and now they're upset because we're gonna make them hook up to city water now, but we didn't make them five years ago, and they just had to invest all this money on a sewer and a well system. It's just.
But I thought we were kind of talking about the language where we would supply the water line there.
Right.
Hook them in as the wells on septic's expired.
Well, I mean, that's all this part of the discussion. It's like we've talked about it, but we don't know.
This now becomes our, our newest one, now that they're twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
Right, but we're nowhere as close to annexing either.
Well, we don't know.
We have a lot of discussions.
Yeah, but I.
But if the, the, the property owner knows that with the understanding that once sewer and water is available, they have to hook up, no matter what they spend on a well or what they spend on a septic, and if they understand that from the beginning, then, then you're, it's buyer beware, I guess, you've told them. You know, here, here it is, we're gonna, if we annex in, you have to become part of us.
No, I, that's the only.
Current owner, and then it sells.
Yeah, and then you sell, and then, you know, that's not disclosed, and then they're upset. I mean, I don't know.
Record it with the county, it gets recorded.
No, I understand.
I struggle with, right, we've had two engineers, I think that's Martinez. We've had two engineers, we've had our public works, um, you know, they all stood here and said, no, not advised to drill a well, not advised to have two lines and, you know, two houses connect to the private sewer line. Um, again, I understand, trying to help, uh, the citizens, but, you know, to do all of this for one address is difficult for me.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, I'm really just, that's where I'm, that's where I'm struggling. That you, I, you have to take out the emotion and the decision that I, I feel like I have to make for the entire city and for future growth or future things, that I feel like when you make. when you make special exceptions and you don't look at the full picture down the line, here we are with an issue.
But we're also at an issue with a city lot that's unbuildable, which shouldn't really be either.
That's, I mean, that's.
It's, it's, it's a valid point, I mean, it's a very valid point.
As of today, that property is absolutely worth nothing.
Right.
You know, because of that, and I, I do think if the city says we should, you need to have city water in, in the city, we gotta be able to get it there, and we're not being able to get it there, so we have to figure something out. But on, on the flip side, I don't know if I'm on a well drilled and five years from now, we have a new well sitting there that we have to deal with. If they hook up and, you know, once we hook up in the city or ten years, whenever it is, now we have another will, or another well we have to manage through and take care of.
But we.
The, the other thing, I'm, I'm a little concerned, I don't quite understand is, I was under the impression, I don't know what others' thoughts are, that we were hearing that Minnesota Department of Health would not even allow a well, that the state wouldn't even allow it, was the impression I was, I thought we had heard that from.
I think I, I have probably said it, and I don't know where I got that in my mind, but yes. And I don't think you want people, because, well, I think because we had a large, a, a large organization that wanted to dig their own well, which may have made a difference.
Yeah.
I, I feel like I just don't have enough information to be able to make a decision today. If I would start moving and looking at an ordinance, I feel like I don't wanna rush a decision because of a timeline that doesn't really matter to the city. It's, it, it's a, it's a homeowner's timeline based on situations out of their control, but I don't wanna make a rash decision. I wanna make the right decision for this property and how to make it right in the best way for the city and that future area, whatever it may be. That's where I'm at today.
And if we do hook into the current sewer, the private line, there was discussion that we should take it over and own it. Then we have those, we gotta deal with that aspect of it too, is now dealing with that line with two houses hooked into it.
And I don't, I don't know what the reason was that it got brought into the city, but it was obviously one parcel prior to coming into the city. That's how the township viewed it. So how did it get split?
It's always been two parcels, it was, it was owned by the Drews. And then the idea was that, that it all would become annexed in and that we would be, do a project, and then we met with resistance back in twenty sixteen from the residents and the township that they didn't want us annexing it into town. But that was because we had another property owner that came before us, purchasing a property that needed a new, he had to upgrade the septic system, and instead of upgrading the septic system, he really wanted the city to provide sewer and water. But the rest of the residents didn't want to be annexed into the city. So the city chose, couldn't do a main then. So it's always been a goal of the city to annex in, but couldn't get the cooperation from the township, so.
So, but I thought you had said, and maybe I didn't hear you correctly, that they couldn't, if they were to go back to the township, they couldn't build because it was a single.
Because it was part of a larger piece before, it used to be part of the house. It was part of the house, but it's now a smaller lot.
So did that happen when it came into the city?
The building eligibility was there, Carver County has requirements for building eligibility.
Yep, I, I'm trying to understand if, when we brought it into the city, we brought it in as two?
I don't remember.
Or if it was already two and un.
I think it was already, it was on already two.
So if they had not been annexed in, they wouldn't be able to sell it if they were still in the township?
Probably not, but by bringing it into the city, he could build on it if city sewer and water were provided to them. So it would, it made it more, more valuable, I guess, I don't know, to bring it into the city. I mean, do you wanna see ordinance language at your next meeting? Wanna see some sample ordinance language?
I'd like to know if there's other cities, okay, that have this, if there's like, uh, unique. I'm not set on a decision by any means, I just, I'm just stating the points that can, concern me the most.
So what do you mean other cities, do you mean?
Well, like if there's.
Other cities our size, or just other cities in Carver County, or?
I mean, I don't really even know where you could, I, I would, I would say similar in comparison to size. I don't think Carver County necessarily is the ideal location for this, cuz we are kind of unique, because we are somewhat in a very rural area surrounding our city. Cuz there's a way. I just, I just, yeah, my biggest concern is just if there ever isn't an annexation at some point in the next five to ten, fifteen years, and whoever owns that property, that could be another big expense that they're required to now pay if, if you guys own it or not own it at the time. I'm, I just have to look out for the entire city, not just for an individual resident in, in the sense of a financial responsibility.
Larry, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I just think it's time to explore that we, to do the annexation.
One of the things that I will tell you, you just updated your comprehensive plan, and part of the comprehensive plan requires the cities to have orderly annexation agreements with all of the townships that they have surrounding them. And we have orderly annexation agreements with all four of the townships that surround us. I've had the conversation with John Anderson, who will be negotiating those orderly annexation agreements, that, um, that there ought to be something in them that states if the city, if it's totally surrounded by a city, that the city should be able to annex it in by ordinance and without township approval. So I don't know if he will try to negotiate that in those early annexation agreements, well, which they've gotta be done within the next year. That would make it easier for you to annex those properties in then, or someone goes to the township and, and, and asks them if they'd be willing to allow that to happen. And I think that's something else that can be done. I've done it once. I, I think that, you know, you've got a new administrator coming, I hate to kick the can down the road, but let Nick go and talk to the, learn, meet Waconia Township and see what they have to say.
Yeah, I think at this point, I'm not apt to allowing a well to be drilled and then managing that sewer line also. I don't know. I don't know if we could come to some agreement with, if the prop, you know, if the property does get purchased, that they're aware. We decide to do it and it pass, I, I hope we can come to an agreement on a certain timeline annexing in that they need to tie in, and I don't know if it has to be immediately, or maybe ten years, or at least ten or fifteen years maybe, or make them equal to maybe when the last person ties in that they have to tie in, or so, so at least they can get some life out of it, but if that's what we decide, but.
Yeah, I'd like examples.
I'm not, I just hate to have another well there, it, with the fact we may be annexing in then and solving it all.
What's the newest well on sixty-second, just a couple of years?
I don't know.
Six was, uh.
Oldest sewer, wasn't it?
Oldest sewers, there's three of them that are twenty years old, I don't know how old the wells are. But the sewers, there's three of them that are over twenty, at least twenty, if not older.
Newest is six years.
Six years, right, it was Lipes in twenty sixteen.
It's what, twenty-five years, Ben?
I also believe if this doesn't get resolved and we can't figure something out, and the people who wanna purchase is back out and don't want it anymore, I feel something has to happen to that property, if we can't get water and sewer, it's not right that a homeowner has this property that's worth nothing. And, and if that comes, becomes a case, I would propose maybe the city just purchases it. We can sit on it, then we don't have to worry, when we annex in, we can sell it, get close to what we had or what we paid, put into it for an acre lot. And in the meantime, you know, it's always there, it's green space, it's stuff we could put the archery range on, it's stuff we could use for a dog park, it's, it's now green space, and I, I just don't think it's right if the current people back out, that the homeowner's stuck with a property that's no value when we dictate these, but we, sorry, we can't do it. That's, I, I would look to maybe just kind of purchase the place or the property, but we'll have to see what happens, I guess.
And I think that, you know, since we do have a new administrator starting, he might have some unique or other thought processes on this whole situation, that I, I just, I'm not comfortable making a decision now. I think that unfortunately, I know times of essence, but I don't wanna make a rash decision based on a timeline that's, I feel rushed on a big decision. That's just where I stand.
I agree with that, I feel like we're just throwing things at the wall to, and I get it to, you know, give the homeowner an option, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I do, I do like Mike's thought as a unique situation for the time being, if we're not able to find resolution for getting sewer and water to the property.
I feel better about that than making a decision to just let them drill a well.
So what if we would just, like with running water from Forest Street out there, it would be part of the loop that we would potentially put in. Somebody would potentially build a house, could tie in, I, I know we would have to take ownership of the sewer line, but couldn't we negotiate something cost-wise, if we're already talking about purchasing the property if you can't sell it, to negotiate monies for the water line itself? Getting out there because it would benefit us, it would benefit them, give them the ability to build, and our water line would be already there once the annexation happens, whether that be ten or fifteen years, I don't know, five, I, I'm, I'm not sure. But could we eat some of that cost instead of purchasing the land?
So you're saying the one thirty-four it would cost to put in that water?
I'm not saying eat the whole thing. You know, obviously, well and septic would cost, I, I don't know.
The, the, if the people who are purchasing it or the current property owner would have to pay for part of that or whatever that is.
Yep, not.
I, I think it gets a little dicey, cuz then it's like when you put in the whole line, then who's, how do you divvy it that separate?
Sewer line that you gotta.
Manage.
Drive it to us own it. I mean, I see, just so I understand, you're thinking something of the lines, and say it's a hundred and thirty to do the water line. If the proposed land, people wanna purchase land, if they have to put twenty-five thousand into a well, they'd take that twenty-five thousand, put it towards the.
The water.
Whatever it is.
And the city would, and the city would, for now, take that cost, the rest of that cost on, and then as hopefully the annexation would come in, then you would assess that then to the other property owners, because that property would already have paid their portion of it.
As a future water main extension.
Correct.
Some of it now.
Right.
But I don't know if it would be their share compared.
Well, correct, correct, yeah, I, I'm.
Forty to fifty thousand.
It's just a proposal.
I still feel like it's just a Band-Aid to fix the problem.
Well, but at least the water line would be there.
A part of it.
Completely usable, though, I mean, that, that can supply the whole road.
But now you have a dead end on a water line.
Those are conversations.
Or does that not matter?
Then we have to have those conversations with people purchasing the property too. And would, do you, do you guys have any input, any thoughts, if you wanna come to the podium? We're looking for any ideas, what are your thoughts on what you're hearing? Typically, I, I won't bring you in on a council meeting, but we wanna try to get some of this resolved too.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we'd need transparency on, like, you, you've covered pretty much everything as far as, you know, us investing in a well and, and, you know, then being forced to hook in the city service, if you decide to push it through, I guess, you know, we just need solid answers on that, and you know, obviously what assessments would be in the future, if and when they do come.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair.
Yeah, I, I think you'll get transparency now, trying to get a number of what's gonna happen in the future, that's gonna be difficult to give you now.
Right, yeah.
Preliminary numbers, we've seen anywhere from forty thousand to seventy thousand per.
What's your name?
My name is Pat, and this is my wife, Asha.
You know, so some of, I mean, we're obviously upfront with everything that we know.
Right, yeah.
Preliminary numbers we're hearing, but those are some of the, but, I mean, I don't know where you guys are in the process, are you getting fed up with it, does it look?
Well, it's, like you stated, the timeline for, for Nick and.
We can have meeting after meeting, but I wanna try to get a little.
Yeah, just, you know, I guess as a potential buyer for the lot, you know, just what's it gonna cost us to get the services, you know, from the city, the water, the sewer is already there. I don't, does anyone, can anyone explain the mechanics of, of the sewer that's already there? How, I mean, how does this?
Well, the sewer isn't there, that would have, that is not there, it's only to the property that's currently on there, you'd have, we'd have to have another line put in, correct? And then we would have to take, it'd be public, private, and then we'd have to take it public, and then we would have to maintain that line, so there would be that, those fees for that hookup. And whatever that costs, I don't know what that is.
Duplicate what Nick already has there, another setup just like that.
Or a larger line.
Cuz I, I mean, I don't know the, the mechanics of it, how it, it drops into a tank, and then it gets pumped up to the city services, or?
I think that's exactly what was going to go during the call.
Mm-hmm.
Shoot up, shot up a line, but you like having each home different service. So not two homes sharing one service, but then fail.
Right.
You know, between both homeowners. Separate services for all.
And then as far as bringing the water service to the end of the road, where we would hook into, what that cost would be. Yeah, it was just a lot of unanswered questions, I guess, that would need to. Well, pretty, I mean, yeah, it's just a lot of open-ended things here, so.
He has more patience than I, that's why he's.
I, you know, it sounds like there's a lot more time needed to, you know, make happen what needs to happen to get any, you know, closing on a lot, I guess.
I mean, I wish it was an easy answer, but it's not, this is a very complicated situation.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of moving parts that have to happen, and I don't feel that the, all the city's taxpayers should have to pay for a connection to one or two lots.
Right, yeah, that's.
You know, so.
If that's where it comes in, then, then should we allow a well, cuz then that's on them.
Right, but I'm just saying, like, you have to add a well, the sewer, you, we would have to connect, we don't even have a number for what that would look like, or what it would take to, for us to take it public, that's not, that, we were, the only numbers that we've seen is that water line, cuz we have to come off Forest Street. We can't come off Ridge Road because of the property and the cost to repair, what we'd have to rip up to get there is probably more expensive than the, the numbers we've seen for just the water line, that doesn't, that doesn't even answer the sewer issue. And we're not gonna let, we can't have another septic tank put in that property, like, I don't even think that's an option. I don't know, I mean, I feel like there's still a lot of unanswered questions. The good news is, is, you know, we do have a new administrator that has experience that I think could probably come up with some other creative ways if you can just give, I know, I, more time, more time, I mean, but welcome to city government. You know, when we only meet twice a month, but.
So what happened? Questions, I guess, so, yeah, it's, it's hard to move forward, I guess.
Thank you. What happens to a well? If we allowed a well, ten years from now, whatever, we hook in, we get sewer, they ended up hooking in that property and the well's there, how do you decommission that well, or what do you do?
You cap it.
Just pull it up?
Well, first of all, they don't have to decommission it, they could keep the well and then use it for irrigation purposes if they wanted to within the city, and not use city water, but use the water from that. Secondly, if you decommission them, they fill them full of concrete, is what you do. Minnesota Department of Health has a process that has to be done.
What does the Minnesota Department of Health prefer would happen to those, would they prefer they get capped?
Well, they're not saying, they're kinda staying out of it, but I would think probably, I mean.
I would maybe be open to maybe something structured around that, that we allow a well for now. And once we annex in, that property would hook up to the, the newest now, they'd be in same line with the six-year people when they'd have to hook up, or if something fails, they gotta hook up. And once they hook up, that that well has to be decommissioned, I would, I would. And once they hook up that that well has to be decommissioned, I would, I would maybe get on board with that.
And you can record that at the county?
And then tie in, and then tie into the existing sewer. I would be okay structuring something like that, that, because really, I mean, more I'm thinking about is one more in a line of, one more well from what we have.
Right.
I prefer not to have anymore in the city, but if we can put it in the language that it must be decommissioned, once they tie in.
So then really we would need prices on the sewer because they would get their own well.
They would have to pay for the sewer. They wouldn't incur those charges.
Right, but that's the price then that we would have to get and they could get their own well prices.
Yeah, they would do their own well.
Right.
For the county.
Yeah, I'd just like to see other ordinances from like cities.
Similar to what the Drew property has right now on a private like that, add one more.
Can we get numbers?
That's at their cost.
Would that, if we'd add a sewer junction down there?
I don't remember. Do you remember what it cost? Because I think your parents paid for it, Nick. I'm, I'm sure they did. I mean, I know it was a while ago.
Have you reviewed?
Yeah. Let me give you a place to start and double it, it'd probably be right.
Probably 5,000 now.
It's by 10.
Or, yeah.
15,000.
Well, we could, you could, you could put.
Thrown out there.
You could put the onus back on them and ask them to get the numbers for what it would cost too and bring it back to you. Or bring it, bring it to the city so the administrator can forward it to the engineer for review on what they, what they would propose.
And again, that's kind of where I'm asking, are you open to these kinds of things? If you're thinking, sitting there now thinking, hell no, we won't even have.
Only further.
There's no point.
Looks like she has something to say.
Well, like you said, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a Band-Aid placed on top of all because still looming overhead would be, you know, assessments down the road.
Oh, yeah. And you've seen those numbers if you were at some of the other meetings, I mean, they're between 40 and 70,000.
Well, and.
Yeah.
But we're trying to get your full life out of it is what he was saying. You'd be shorted by about five years, five, six years on it before you'd be annexed in and have to hook up.
Or if something failed and you had to replace it, then.
Right, then you'd hook up too.
Well, those, I mean, but those are still negotiable sections of an annexation agreement.
Right.
With the rest of the home. So I don't want to promise something and that's not what happens because you have, might have different council people, different, lots of different things, unfortunately.
I mean, do you want to get numbers together and see what you're looking at and then try to make a determination from there? Maybe.
Way to go about it. I can see it without any numbers.
But would our team have to get the sewer numbers? I mean.
Yeah, aren't you going to have them, are you going to have them install it or are we going to install it?
We're talking about the sewer.
We're talking sewer.
Right.
We have to? I mean, they can't just randomly hook into our line.
Another private line like.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It'd be, it, there must be an easement across the property for the other one.
Kyle, is that something you can kind of help them with to get them in the right direct? I mean, do you know, or is that a Dave Martini?
Dave is gone right now.
One is ran currently.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know. Go to new.
I think we can get, I think we can get some of that information from Dave and then pass it along to help on this kind of what it, what you need to mimic.
Then who pays for those, all these engineering costs for a single home, just figuring out?
Once it comes down, I mean, getting a little information, Dave shouldn't be much.
I don't, I mean, I don't know.
But if they're invited, no, if we have to get the city engineer involved for some of it, I think it goes back to the.
That's a pass, yeah, it's a pass through expense.
Yeah, like any building, yep.
Yeah.
I would guess.
Is that what you want us to do?
I guess we'd like to get, I mean, this is our second meeting that we've had.
Yep.
And I'd like to get numbers.
Yep.
I don't want to keep coming every month.
Nope.
I just, I mean, we've got a kid that's going to be going to Mayor of Atlanta in a couple of years and I just, I don't have the patience or the time to, to come to a meeting every time and not get any answers. And I know it's a time, assuming it takes time, but I'd like to see numbers.
Okay. I mean, that's something we can do so that we know what direction.
We were hoping to get numbers.
So, so you want, what?
We were hoping to get some.
Yeah. So you want cost for the sewer? Are you going to find out what a well would cost to dig yourself? Because you can contact a well driller and find out.
Yeah.
So you can do that. We'll get costs on the sewer and try to find out what that is. Do you have an email address or that you could leave on your signing, on the sign in sheet and I can forward the information to you that, as we get it? And then we'll put you back on the council agenda once we have those numbers and then you can make your, you know, if that's what you want to do, then the, the council can authorize the project to begin or not.
I mean, we're not giving up on this project. I mean, that's why it keeps getting brought up on, in our, on our agendas. Just unfortunately, there just keeps to be more and more questions when we get deeper into it.
We weren't clear on which way we were going to go, whether we were going to de-annex you, whether we were going to, what we were going to do. So now that's pretty clear that that's not an option for us to do. Maybe the only other thing for us to do then is to allow you to dig a well and to run another sewer line. So what we'll do is get the cost for that and then you can make your decision about whether that's what you want to, what you want to spend. As far as I think on the, on the assessments, I don't think the city council knows how soon those assessments are going to happen or when that project's going to happen. They can't really give you a year and say, five years, we're going to bring you into the city. It might be 20 years, who knows?
It might never be.
Yes.
I suppose then you can just forward over Dave's estimate.
Information and then they can let me know what they want to do. Yep. So I will work on that tomorrow. I will get ahold of the city engineer and try to find out.
What other numbers were you looking for? What other numbers do you need when you say you, you wanted numbers here?
Just the well and the, and the sewer, right?
Because we had the water, what, to put the water main, it was 135 grand. We know that amount. We kind of have a rough estimate, a kind of, you know, from 40 to 70,000 on assessments, but I don't know what else you want for the sewer, for the private line, for the sewer?
And maybe I can dig up what we had from the past and they can just try to update it so the cost for the engineering will be minimal for them to do that for now. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds fair.
Okay. So leave me a phone, I think I have your phone number. I know I do. I will be in touch before the end of the week and let you know where I'm at in the process so that you know what's happening. Okay? Yep.
At then we'll move to six.
Clears mud? Okay.
Change in insurance carry.
Yes. The city has received notice that Preferred One will no longer, loner, be providing health insurance coverage. They have been purchased by United Healthcare. Filing table reflects the city administrator positions and the other employees that are covered by the Preferred One policy. Each carrier provides somewhat the same coverage as currently provided by Preferred One, but renewals are slightly higher. The carrier that is closest to the current provider in coverage and cost would be Health Partners. Although Blue Cross Blue Shield is a smaller percentage of change, the deductible is higher compare, it's 4250 compared to 3,000 on the other policies. So the recommendation would be for the city to purchase policies for city employees with Health Partners. And this came from your, from the agent that you work with on your health insurance for your administrator and your other employees that you have. This isn't the union employees. So I'm looking for a motion to allow me to just, for them to go to Health Partners.
This is not for union? This is just for city administrator?
Right.
Yeah, and your other one that you have.
Oh, got it. Yep.
And do they currently have a $3,000 deductible?
Yes.
That's what I thought I read. Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, you're welcome.
Other questions? A motion to switch the city employee health insurance from.
Preferred One.
Preferred One to Health Partners.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five zero. Six eight nine, approval of fence permit 109 West Ridge Road.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the resident at 109 West Ridge Road is requesting to place his fence on the property line. The city requires that property owners, when requesting placing fences on property lines to acquire the adjacent property owner's signature. The city is the adjacent property owner, West Ridge Park. The fence is either going to be a four or six foot black chain link is what he's telling me and he wants to place it on the line. He will also have to acquire the side yard property owners to sign off in order for the fence to be placed on, on his side yards. So I'm requesting approval of placing the fence on the property line of 109 West Ridge Road that abuts the section of West Ridge Park. I have talked to Public Works about it. They didn't have an issue with it. So I don't know if you have any other questions?
I've got one. So now won't Public Works have to weed eat the backside of that fence?
Kyle? No, he's saying that they would just probably spray it.
Spray it, you don't want to damage the fence.
So they wouldn't want to weed whip it and damage the fence? So they probably just spray and kill the weeds.
But kill them over onto the other side.
What happens if this property owner sells it and then this guy goes, well, I'm not going to mess with that and it looks like my neighbor on. So why can't, why can't he take it off the property line?
He can. He can put it two feet off. He's just requesting to go on the property line. So we're here, I'm asking you if that's what you want to do? And if you don't, then I just tell him, you don't want to sign off on it, that he needs to keep it two feet off the property line. And that's what you'll have to do on the park side.
I don't care about the two side, his neighbors, basically, the park.
Right, because.
He's reading the book.
Well, I think, I think we'd be consistent and do it at two feet. Otherwise, that's a variance.
Because he could complain that you killed too much.
And that's true.
I, I stick with the two feet, two feet back.
And what are the other two property owners? Have they signed off?
I have no idea.
The side ones?
That isn't going to matter because it'll just be two feet shorter then. I mean, we, we have property owners that get fences where one property owner will let them put it on the line and the other one won't on side yards.
Oh, so just one of them comes in two feet and the other.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yep.
We're just here concerning the city portion.
We're, we're here concerning the city portion in order to, for him to put it on the line, the city needs to sign off.
Kyle, from Public Works, there's no issue with that.
I wasn't concerned about it.
Okay.
Well, because.
I don't know how you can go put weed killer down and kill.
No, we went to, no, no, no. We maintain our side as we, without damaging the fence.
Right.
Really ideal though.
I suppose there's no way to write it in that that property owner has to come weed whip our, our side. That's public land, he's not going on another property, you know.
We have any other properties that have this?
Someone else's property, but with us.
No, there's no fences other than Kyle's.
This is, it's a chain link fence.
Right.
So that's not like a wood privacy fence. That's like a whoop de whoop.
Yep.
Very technical, I know, but.
We knew what you meant.
Why not have them maintain it, weed whip it?
We can, we can ask him to. What happens when he doesn't?
That's what I'm concerned about.
Forget it.
Because if he stays two foot back.
What do I care?
I'm fine. If Kyle, if we're, if there's a problem, I don't have a problem, but.
One swipe of the lawnmower behind his fence and it sounds like he's going to have a gate, so he can get out.
So are you making a motion to deny the request?
I say stay with the two foot setback.
Are you, is that, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion?
Do we have other properties where the city has been in this similar situation?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That I can recall. This is like one of the first times, I think, that we've ever been asked to, to, about putting next to a park that I can think of. Kyle?
Yeah. I should go with sometimes these one offs just to.
My first, when I read this was, no, we don't allow it, but now here in Public Works has no problem.
Right.
I don't have a problem with it.
Right, but you'll hear from him, I'm sure.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion a second to deny the request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
Who voted no?
Mike.
Me and Nikki. All right, city council reports. Councilmember Melander, anything to report on?
No, I don't want.
Councilmember Wagner?
No.
Councilmember Neely?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
Music in the park, Sunday.
I'm excited.
Weather's supposed to be gorgeous.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, yep.
This'll be fun. I really hope this is successful and we can do this more often in the summer.
There's also a fire department open house. Annie, can you remind me the date, please? Or Bob, do you know?
It's the Saturday, 10, 13, 14?
I'm sorry to put you on the.
Has to be the 15th.
Saturday is the 15th.
Be the 15th.
Saturday, the 15th, an open house at the fire department.
Okay.
11 to 3.
11 to 3. What is it? The 16th? 15th, 1 to 3.
1 to 3. All right, and then as people mentioned early, Luanne, on behalf of the city and the residents, thank you very much for your flexibility. Thanks for covering for us. We appreciate everything you've done. Like I said, especially your flexibility by extending it and now spending some time with the new administrator next week to kick him off, probably give him all this stuff, I think will be very beneficial. So thank you for all your efforts and all your work.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
It'll make me cry. Okay.
All right, anybody need a quick break? Okay, with that, we'll just jump right into the work session at 7:35. Number two, Ridgeview ambulance.
I don't know.
So he is not able to be at the meeting tonight. He, something else came up. Mark Anderson had emailed me and said, so I don't know what you want to do about the Ridgeview ambulance discussion. The chief and I did meet with them out at the new fire station and they, he did, you know, kind of tell me that. There really wasn't a day room for him out there. So they didn't know, you know, he didn't know, really think it's conducive for them to be able to go out there. That's what he said to me.
All right. Anything more to add? Annie, without him here, we'll have to reschedule to get them here, but.
Talking with him, he really would like to be in mayor. As we walked through the news station, you know, looking for possible locations for them to be. He said all the locations they're at right now, they basically have kind of a, it's like I say, a studio apartment type thing, a separate standalone room that they're able to be in. He was not very, didn't really want to do kind of a shared type of room because, just because, he said, he said, I'll admit, he said, my guys are slobs. Or my people are slobs. And, you know, we, we've got to get up and take off or something. We're going to leave stuff around and. Doing that in a, in a shared, you know, an actual shared room, which would be, you know, basically what we currently have right now, the only option would be a shared area. And so he didn't, you know, didn't like that kind of idea of doing that.
So it seems, I mean, do we need to have more discussion? Are they saying that, I mean, that's our only option, right? I mean, we're selling the new old one. That's our option, correct?
You know, I, I would value Ridgeview being in town greatly. I mean, I think to our, our residents and everything, I think is a very valuable resource to have a, you know, an ALS ambulance. In town, which from what he would say would probably be, probably 75% of the time, there would be a rig, you know, stationed here. I think that is very beneficial to our residents of having that. Especially, you know, looking at, right now during the day, we're okay with manpower, but a number of those people that are here during the day. Are going to be retiring soon. So our manpower during the day may not look as good. And so having that resource in town. Right away, I think is very valuable. And I think we need to take that into kind of consideration and. Seeing what we can do to kind of do that. I tried planning for, for having Ridgeview here. We kind of had that day room, you know, planned in the first set of plans, but that ended up getting, you know, cut. We had to cut the budget on that.
Yeah, but even, yeah, but even through the end of the process, when we were approving other, you know, we approved that extra bay for Ridgeview. I mean, so we still knew there wasn't a day room there, but we're still, we're planning for it. We still had the extra bays for Ridgeview. So they must have been okay at that time or someone was okay at that time.
I, I don't recall that extra bays. It was just more for future growth instead of, it was just, instead of leaving it open and adding it, we just added it for extra room for growth. I, I don't recall it being designated for Ridgeview.
We did talk about, you know.
That was part of the rationale.
Do something and try and design something yet for them to be, or we would have to try and. You know, design something in the bay for them, you know, air condition it and stuff like that because bay is an air condition. Find different ways.
How big of a room do they need?
Maybe, maybe we set up, you know, we, we should have Ridgeview here, obviously. Maybe we get a group. Maybe it's either Public Works or Personnel. And the fire chief and meet with, you know, and get some of this stuff worked out now that we can bring back to council. Maybe we get that. Maybe Public Works is the, I don't know, whichever one, doesn't matter to me. And working with chief, one, two, and at Ridgeview to try to figure something out and give a couple of proposals to council. People be okay with that?
I mean, I don't know if, you know, I know the old station, you're, you're selling that is, do you have the possibility of speaking with the buyer? Purchasing, you know, you still have the sheriff's office that you, that was set up pretty nice for both the sheriff's office and Ridgeview. Is there potential of the city either purchasing back or retaining part of it? You know, would the purchaser entertain that notion that you could solve those, both the issues of the, you know, sheriff office needing a meeting room?
Perhaps. I mean, that's certainly something to bring back and something we could bring to council. I, I know for me, when we authorized selling it was to get businesses there, that it was going to expand in and bring stuff to the community. Versus now us buying half it back. We would have just sold half the building if that was the case. Or if Ridgeview wants to get ahold of them and maybe rent, I could get on board with that. But, but that's where I think a smaller group, meeting with you and Ridgeview, and we bring a couple of options back and look at every option. Personnel committee or anyone have a preference? Who?
Well, I think, I think maybe both. Because Public Works is one person and, I mean, just looking at all the options.
Public Works committee is the engineer, the.
Oh, then yeah.
Mayor, the.
I'm okay with either one.
City administrator.
I think, any, any amount of minds we can get.
I think, I think having Kyle's input as part of the Public Works seems to, that's why I brought up Public Works seems to make sense to me.
Not just the Public Works employee, but the committee.
Right, yeah, Public Works committee, yep. All right. We good with that? All right, Carver County Sheriff's Office.
So Carver County Sheriff is going to be vacating the old fire station the end of December. They don't want to be in there at all. So you need to make a decision about what, where you're going to office for them also. So I don't know if you want to.
We have that same group come up?
I'm wondering if that's what you want to do.
Kill two birds with one stone.
Yep. All right, we'll have to get some on the calendar right away then so we can get someone back sooner than later to the group. Fire Department's fitness waiver.
Yep, you asked me in the beginning to, to find out if the city should require a waiver of the exercise equipment and about maintenance and checks of the equipment. I contacted the League of Minnesota Cities and their answer was attached along with a sample waiver form. In essence, they're saying if the firefighter is using the equipment while on duty, it would be considered an on-the-job injury, therefore covered by workman's comp. They think a waiver would be a good idea. However, the firefighter cannot waive his right to work comp benefits, but they attached, again, a copy of the waiver with a disclaimer. And they make no guarantees to its quality, although you have one from your attorney too. Second, they state it would be great if the city would, could visually inspect the equipment on a regular basis. And then they state that each person, as they're using it, should have a duty to visually inspect. So maybe it becomes some kind of a sign-off sheet as they're using the equipment. And then the league's thought that some fitness room rules may be a good idea. So then there were a couple of other things that they thought would be a good idea. So maybe the fire department needs to discuss, you know, about checking the equipment or doing some sign-up sheets. Who to report damages to, cleanup, what do you do for cleanup, who can use the equipment and, and, you know, just some ideas for fitness room rules.
And I'm good with that. I mean, if recognition's not have a waiver, I'm okay with that. We know who's going in and out. No one will ever, no one will be using it on work time where it would be workers comp, correct? It's all.
Well, you know, like after a call, they could be using it.
If it's happened.
And they're on call.
How do you determine?
Right.
When, I mean, we're on call 24 hours.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So when do you call that?
Not being on duty. You're always on duty.
Well, if, yeah, that's the case, then I think we got to figure something out. Because you could go to SNAP Fitness now and would you be on duty? Is that a line-of-duty accident? Because you're on duty 24/7 if you're at SNAP?
I mean, probably, you know, not, not that.
Yeah.
Is it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, did we, did we ever look at what other departments do?
Some of them have fitness room waivers. Cell sure does and they have rules. Chan Hassen doesn't because they see it just as being part of the, they're on call or they're, they're covered by workman's comp. Chaska, I don't think ever got back to me.
Okay.
But yes, I did do some checking.
Some of those we want to make sure too, if they have duty crews where they're.
Right.
And that are working out while they're on duty.
Duty. Chan Hassen would.
Right, which she does.
Right. It wouldn't be a volunteer.
I don't know. What are your thoughts? Do you?
At that point, it's probably still not required for them to be working out during their, you know, when they're doing a duty crew. It's just something for them to do while.
But they're being, but they're being paid an hourly wage.
Yeah, have the time go by. What are your thoughts? I mean, do you see a need for a waiver or not? Do you, as I can?
I don't think, I don't think you'd have any opposition from anybody signing a waiver on it. They're all under the understanding that they're over risk that they don't work it out and stuff like that. There's nothing, nothing we are requiring.
Yeah.
Our members to do, but it's a.
Benefit.
It's a benefit for them.
I think having rules like how to clean it and, I mean.
Yeah, rules, we probably should have someone.
Yeah.
Sanitize when you're done.
Well, like wipe stuff down, you know, like what, every workout place.
We should have towels, we should have towels available and.
But you need to put it in a policy. You need to put in a rule.
Pretty sure that it would affect us if we weren't getting paid. Somebody's up there exercising, like we're on a training tonight and we're getting paid that training night, then you would come and play what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But any other time, even though we're paid on call, just because we're up there exercising, we're not getting paid.
Paid, yeah, right.
Right.
Come and play what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Don't keep going, Bob.
But, but you're right. Wait, to Bob's point, I mean, you're, I agree with that. But if you were doing training, you're at training, getting paid for, you wouldn't be able to lift, I mean, exercise. Oh, oh, as, oh, that's your training night? Oh, oh, sure. Then that makes sense. Then for sure. Then for sure. Yep. I would agree.
The workman's comp comes on to exactly what you're talking about. Are you performing prior to what your duties have laid out in the job description or is not? Hey, you're on call 24 hours. I can tell you the city administrator, I'm on 24 hours too. So if, you know. If you're doing that as, as, if we're doing that as a, a training one night, right, you've got a station that we're doing some fitness stuff.
Right.
It's a difference.
That totally, totally agree. And that, and that should be.
If it's an extracurricular activity or this is an added bonus to our firefighters so that they have fitness activities up to them, it's a benefit, but it's done outside of.
And what was?
Work hours or work duties.
Then we shouldn't need a waiver then.
You'd want them to sign a waiver then, I would.
What was Tim's recommendation?
He didn't really have one.
To me, it sounds like we don't need one.
Well, it sounds like, you can have a lot of waiver, but I don't know how much it's going to stand up.
That's the other.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's at least get rules up there then or something.
So do you want, do you want the fire department to come up with the rules? Do you want them to, to get, come up with some fitness room rules themselves?
Maybe have a sign-in sheet, you know, whoever's up there so you kind of.
I'll forward this email to you so you can see what they recommend, like check the equipment, who to report damage to. So you have from the league, okay.
Do we report damage to?
It sounds like it's similar to what you have with your own.
All right. Yeah, then I think we can.
I'll quit and report any damages to Mike. Call him anytime.
24/7. In fact, here's his number.
I think the new administrator just said he's on call 24/7.
Get right back to him.
Can't reach Mike, call Nick. Can't get Nick, call Kyle. That's what I heard.
Ah, I think so. I'll call Luanne.
Yeah, why don't you guys try to put down a few, combination, if we think of a few things between, and we'll figure something, get some signs up there, whatever you need up there. Whatever you need up there, we'll get. All right. Anything more on that? All right, with that, then we are adjourned.
All right. Luanne, what are the times October 13?
Say that again.
October 13, 13. What are the times for that?
Two to four. I'll shoot everybody an email. Two.
Yeah, we never really work sessions.
See, that's what's goofy is it's even on here. I don't know. Because when I asked Maggie. Right, one, why didn't she reject mine? You know what I'm saying? Because it's not like I didn't write them down. I wrote down every meeting we've ever had. Do you know what I mean? So I wa, I wasn't doing it on purpose.
A special work session.
Right.